Right. Call to order, the special meeting of the Ellsworth City Council. This is Friday, June 26, 2015, and we have an agenda before us. I would ask council's indulgence, we want to, I want to ask that we add three items to this morning's agenda. Number three, on your agenda regarding the LD1, that will be an addition if so approved. And then, item six, which is also on your list this morning, would be an additional item regarding accepting payments on tax-acquired time-share units. And adding a third item, which will go in as six A, which would be the Tax Anticipation Borrowing Authority, which also you should have before you.
Move addition to those three items, Jim.
Thank you. You have a second?
Yeah.
Move and second it. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. So we've added three, six, and six A. Thank you, council. We'll go right to unfinished business. Item number two is a public hearing in action on the budget resolution for FY 2016. Public hearing was held on June 15, 2015. What's council's desire on this?
Move we leave it on the table, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Move and second it. All in favor? That is unanimous. Item number three, the added item, is the public hearing in action on the intent of the Ellsworth City Council to increase the property tax limit for FY 2016 according to LD1. Public hearing on this was held on June 15, 2015.
Will we leave it on the table, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Move and second it. All in favor? That is unanimous. So items two and three are left on the table. Under new business, item four, public hearing in action on the following Ellsworth School Budget Resolutions for FY 2016. School superintendent is here. Would you like to speak to this now and tell us kind of where you've been and where you're headed?
Yes, I would do that.
Come to the podium.
Good morning, Mr. Manager, council members, audience members, and members of the viewing public. I am very pleased to present the revised FY 16 Ellsworth School Department Budget this morning to the council. Before I get to the numbers and talk about how we got to the draft that's going to be presented this morning, just want to speak first to the fact that it's been a great first year as a new Ellsworth School Department. We are focused on improving the school department and restoring it to its former status as a premier school system. We've instituted a pre-K through adult education philosophy for our operations and decision-making. We're capitalizing on the expertise and knowledge of our administrative, teaching, and support staff, and working to make a smooth transition to a proficiency-based instructional model. We are nearing the end of a fantastic process of creating a new vision and mission for the Ellsworth School Department. We had a wonderful community meeting a couple of nights ago. I know that's going to tie into what the city is doing with their mission and vision as well, and we're excited about that. The mission and vision that we're working on will incorporate community values and beliefs towards education and reflective of community values towards education, and in restoring pride to the Ellsworth School Department. We've had a great reception to the new school department from our staff, from our students, from our parents, and from our citizens. We're fortunate to have a well-functioning school board who is committed to the education of students. We're very fortunate to have a great relationship with the council. One other thing that I would like to mention is, with the vote in November of 2013 to withdraw the Ellsworth schools from the larger regional school unit and have the city schools come back under city control and guidance and leadership, we have looked at that as not only an opportunity to take our schools forward, but also a responsibility to the citizens of Ellsworth. One of the reasons that the schools and the city wanted the schools to come back was that we wanted to take our schools and take them as far as we can, to have them be part of the continued growth of Ellsworth, contribute to the economic growth of Ellsworth, and have schools that are once again, schools that everyone can be proud of and that are the envy of other school systems in the state of Maine. In creating our budget, we created it with those thoughts in mind. We want to take the school department as far as we can. So if I may, I'd like to just do a very brief overview of where we went from the start of the budget process to where we are with our current draft. In essence, we've done three drafts of the budget thus far. The first draft was an initial draft done at the administrative level and at the school board level. This was a draft that we looked at with that responsibility and opportunity in mind. We wanted to move the school department forward with our goals. There were no extras in the budget. There were no frills. What there were were proposals to move our school department forward. Included in those proposals were a new kindergarten teacher to address enrollment, four new special ed. teaching positions that would be offset by the reduction of some ed. tech positions so that we could move forward with what is known as a co-teaching model, a new technology integration teacher so that we could capitalize on the investment that the city and the school department has made in technology, infrastructure, and software, two new custodial positions to replace positions that have been lost over the past five years, a new half-time guidance counselor position at Ellsworth Elementary-Middle School, increasing the Ellsworth Elementary-Middle School Assistant Principal-Athletic Director position to full-time, adding a half-time business office position, adding a new ed. tech at Hancock County Technical Center for the successful early childhood program, increasing the adult education director to a full-time director rather than having her serve as a director and a teacher, and adding a half-time teacher for that program so that the director could be full-time and help move that adult education program forward. We also included funding to address facilities and operational needs, funding to upgrade our bus inventory, professional development dollars to support teacher work in the ongoing transition to a proficiency-based educational model, and upgrades to our curricular materials and resources, and those were based upon the results of student assessments. And again, we developed that budget with the opportunity and responsibility in mind of taking our schools forward, but also with the knowledge that this particular budget for FY 16 would be the true baseline budget for the Ellsworth School Department. When we looked at the total of that, we were looking at a 7% increase overall in the budget, which would result in over a 20% increase locally. And certainly, with our desire to fulfill our responsibility, we knew that that would not be a budget that we could take forward. So we went back to our administrative team and began working on a scaled-back proposal that would meet the needs of our students and staff and keep our department moving in a positive direction, although not being able to add the things that we wanted to add. Now, one of the things that was very difficult for us was the revenue side of the equation. Even if we were to have a budget that we presented that had no increase in expenditures, we would experience a significant increase locally. Reasons for that are, through the school funding formula, the increase in the mil-rate expectation from 8.1 mils to 8.48 mils. And again, the mil-rate expectation is the amount of money that we have to raise locally in order to get a full amount of state subsidy. That would have resulted in a $349,000 increase in what we have to raise. The prize that we get for increasing our local contribution would be a decrease in subsidy of $291,000. Another place where we looked at the revenue side was dealing with an overestimate of tuition revenues for this year. We're looking at a decrease of $445,000 in tuition revenues for next year. One other piece that contributed to the revenue side being a challenge is the second year of an increase of the school department's share of state retirement payments for teachers. That increase went from 2.65% of eligible wages to 3.38% of eligible wages, and for 2015-16, the amount in our subsidy report was $233,000. So with all those revenue pieces factoring into the amount we need to support the expenditure side of the budget, we would have experienced an $883,000 increase if we had a 0% budget. And I say that now because I think it's important for the council and our citizens to know that we do have a responsible expenditure side of the budget with the next two drafts I'm going to talk about, but the revenue side is significantly a challenge. Since that initial draft with a 7% increase that was not presented to the council or the voters, we worked with our principals and department directors to reduce the expenditures and try to reach a budget that maintained the current levels of programs and services. And I stress that, to maintain the current levels of programs and services. Again, it's one that is not going to move the school department backwards. With the quality of staff and administrators and support staff that we have, we are going to move forward. We're just not going to be doing it at as fast a pace as we would like. We removed all new positions from that list that I presented in the initial draft, with the exception of the kindergarten teacher position, and that stays in there because we have that number of students that we need an additional position to support. We maintained a part-time custodian at the elementary-middle school because we were needing to use substitutes to fill the cleaning needs that we had there. So that's a wash in the budget. And we are required to add a part-time special education administrative assistant to deal with a mandate from Augusta that the Ellsworth School Department take care of billing and processing bills for a special-purpose private school that's within our city's boundaries. In addition to reducing all those new positions and new initiatives, we transitioned a number of maintenance projects into two- or three-year phase-in projects. We identified some grant resources to address a number of staff needs for professional development, and we arrived at a proposal that would have reflected a 2.6% increase. And that translated to a $1.3 million increase locally. That is the version that was presented to our school board on May 12 and approved unanimously. That was the one that was presented to you on May 18 and that you approved, and was sent to the voters on June 9. And as we know, the referendum on June 9, our citizens spoke by a small margin and said, "We do not support that budget." The following morning, I convened our administrative team, and we started looking at options for reducing the budget to a proposal that we still believe will be responsible and can keep the school department heading in the right direction, but that is responsive to the results of the referendum. And we also looked at the options with the knowledge that further reductions are going to lead to an impact on students and an impact on programming. But with that knowledge, our group offered recommendations for consideration. We prioritized those options and came up with about $135,000 in reductions. And I'd like to express those to you at this point in time. The reductions that we made are as follows. In looking at the number of vacancies at Ellsworth High School, we opted not to fill one of the social studies vacancies. That was about a $45,000 reduction. And the impact on students and staff is as follows. That will result in some schedule changes at Ellsworth High School. It will eliminate a section of sociology and psychology, which would impact 40 students' schedules. It's a class they would not be able to take. And we'll see larger class sizes in some of our core classes in the social studies As part of our review of that budget that was rejected at the polls, we also took a review of our grant resources to see if there was any room that we could make some adjustments. And we did find some space there. One of them was a literacy specialist position at the elementary-middle school that through a staff retirement was transitioned from a K-4 position to a 5'8" position. And we looked at, do we have resources under Title 1A to support that position? We found that because of a number of purchases we made with that grant fund this year, purchases for resources and materials that will not need to be purchased on an annual basis, we had enough funds to support that position under Title 1. So we have moved that position under Title 1, which reduced the local budget by $29,000. We found at Ellsworth Middle School, $9,100 in reductions to textbooks and supplies. The original proposal that we had for social studies textbooks was a good proposal, but we looked at alternatives and found a less costly alternative that we've put into the budget instead, and we were able to reduce some supplies, and that was $9,100 in savings. We also looked at our summer special education program, which is a program we provide for students eligible under special needs, and another grant that we have access to, which is a local entitlement grant. We have a larger-than-expected carryover for the following year, and we looked at, is that an acceptable cost under that budget? We were informed by our contacts in Augusta that that would be an approvable cost, so we transitioned $21,290 from the local budget to the local entitlement grant budget. We reduced $5,000 in the anticipated out-of-district tuition line, and this is a tuition line for payments for students that we've tried to program for locally that we're not able to program for locally. We were able to purchase an evaluation tool under our special education consultant line this year that would enable us to reduce $1,875 from the last budget proposal. We were also able to reduce $2,150 in expenses related to summer work for kindergarten teachers, and those will be funded under Title 1 as well. I reviewed our energy usage at Ellsworth Elementary-Middle School and Ellsworth High School and found that with additional data, that we're able to reduce four lines, electricity and heating oil at middle school and high school, by $250 each, which results in a $1,000 reduction. And one other piece that was fortuitous, while discussing the process of filling one of our vacancies in the transportation line, I noticed that in our accounting software there was a position that we talked about way back at the beginning of the budget process would have been a new bus driver position that did not come forward and was not part of any presentations or proposals, but funding for that was still included in there. We were able to reduce $17,545 from the lines to correct that error. Now, the total reductions in this request for this proposal is $134,636.96. This brings a proposed budget to $19,518,535.18, which is an increase of $363,753. This is a 1.9% increase over the budget for FY 15. When you add in the adult education budget, the total increase becomes $429,000 or 200, excuse me, 2.2%, not 222%. But one thing I would note about adult education, it's important to note that we operated the adult education program for a portion of the school year this year, and that is why you see a larger increase on that line. We will be operating it for a full year. And again, we're very fortunate to have the adult education program. Our school board supported it when the new district was formed, and the council supported it. And that program has seen significant success this year, even operating on a part-time. So on the local side of the ledger, the total local appropriation is $11,73,852, which is an increase of 1.1 million, and that is down $135,000 from the budget that was sent to the polls the last time. The budget proposal that's in front of you this morning represents, with the exception of the impact on programs and students affected by the decision not to fill a social studies position, it's a spending plan that maintains the current level of programs and services. And the increase again also factors in running the adult edu, excuse me, adult education program for a full year rather than a partial year. A couple of things that I would ask you to consider in your deliberations this morning is that we are still awaiting word from Augusta on the final disposition of the state budget. At this point in time, what we know is the following. There was a budget approved by the legislature, and it was sent to the governor's desk, and included in that budget were approximately $80 million more for education than last When that budget was sent to the governor, he issued over 60 line-item vetoes, which included one line-item veto of taking $30 million out of that proposal. And as we all know, all of those line-item vetoes were overridden by the legislature, both houses. It is expected that Governor LaPage will veto the entire budget bill, although I have not heard that that has happened yet. I think the expectation is that it will occur on Monday. And if the response to the line-item vetoes is any indication, I would expect that the legislature would override the governor's expected veto of the state budget. Whether it is vetoed and overridden, or if he allows it to become law without his signature, there should be increased dollars allocated to education that should provide some benefit to Ellsworth. What I would like to be able to tell you this morning is the impact of those additional dollars. Unfortunately, I cannot do that. The word we have received from the Department of Education is, "We will not receive any numbers until the state budget has been disposed of by the legislature." And I would hope that that is going to be next Tuesday. But it's also important to note for those here in the audience this morning and for our citizens that the school board and the council, the last time that we did a budget, took action to take any additional dollars that we get through the subsidy process and use them for the FY 16 budget to reduce the local tax impact. And I think that is a very wise decision. And again, I think this is a very responsible expenditure side of the budget. We're looking at a 1.9% increase on the general fund. We're maintaining programs and services. It does not move us backwards. Making additional cuts will move us backwards because we're left to look at programs and services. It also reflects an opportunity and responsibility to keep this school department in a continuous improvement model, and I believe that's what we are expected to do in partnership with the city in moving our city and school department forward. I thank you for the opportunity to present this morning, and if you have questions of me as you move through your agenda, we'd be happy to answer them for you. Thank you.
One overall question, if I may.
Sure.
Mr. Higgins, did you, did you say, did I hear correctly, that the difference now or the expense is one point, increase is 1.9%?
The increase in the budget from FY 15 is a 1.9% increase in expenditures.
Right.
Okay, that is the general portion of the budget. Adult education, when you add that in, again, that's a separate item on your agenda this morning, when you add that in, it's a 2.2% increase.
And we were at 2.9?
The last budget that came forward, not counting adult education, was 2.6. So we've reduced from 2.6 to 1.9.
Okay. Thank you.
Dan?
Any other comments from council?
Just a comment that one of the reasons I support this is I think it's critical that we do continue the improvements if we're going to expect to increase students coming into the schools.
Yes.
And I noticed that the deficit for people not coming into the schools is quite high. So anything we can do to bring more students in is of vital importance.
I appreciate that comment, Mr. Moore. I think it's also important to note that when we went through the process of replacing a principal that retired, or excuse me, resigned last year, one of the things that we looked at is bringing someone in who can move us in the direction of making our product more attractive to people who have choice. And we have a principal who has a history of doing that in his previous school district, who I am confident is going to do that here. Again, when you bring him into the mix with what we're trying to do as a district overall with a supportive board, with a supportive council, and supportive community, I am confident that that is going to happen.
I agree with you. I know the man very well.
Yes, you do.
And I think he will do a great job.
And what was the projection, I should know this number too, but I can't pull it up, what was the projection for the enrollment, total enrollment for the year coming?
Next year, 470.
470.
And certainly we're-
That's high school.
That's the high school, yes.
High school, yeah. So we have room to move on that, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
And we're already working on it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had one.
Go ahead.
Actually, a couple. You say that larger class sizes because of the not filling the social studies teaching position would result in larger class sizes in some subjects and areas.
Yes.
How big, how much larger?
We'd be moving from 16, 17 students in those classes to 20, 21. And again, it's not a significant increase, but it is an increase. I think it's a bigger impact to say that we're losing a couple of electives, and there are 40 students who won't be able to take a couple of those classes. And I think it's important also, and I appreciate the question, to talk about our vision and mission work. One of the things that we've seen in the results of the survey, and we received over 600 survey responses from people about our vision and mission-
That's great.
-was that people want to see the Ellsworth School Department continue to provide opportunities for students. They want to see us expand those types of opportunities for students, elective offerings, co- and extracurricular offerings, rather than take them away. So I think that even this particular impact on students and class sizes and programming, we're doing it because we need to do it. But I think it is something that, based upon the survey results, isn't something that the survey results would dictate that we want to do. But yes, it would increase those class sizes by four or five students per class and take away the opportunity for kids to take those other two courses.
And the other thing I wanted to say, I have gone back and forth on this seriously. I believe that the people that voted in the vote earlier this month, that turned the budget down, were looking for an overall larger cut in the, in the budget. 0.69, is that what it ended up being?
Yes.
I think it's much less than what they were looking for, and in some regards, I can agree with them, going by just the numbers. However, the vote in November of '13 by roughly 3,000 people to pull out of the IRSU for Ellsworth to take back control of its schools, in my mind, it outweighs the, the vote of 232.
234, I believe.
People that, that turned the budget down. I realize that the first budget was a starter budget. Some of those numbers had to be put together very quickly by staff, and, which I think did a great job, but some of them were just by guessing, by God, numbers. And now that we've been at it for a year, now we have real numbers, and to have a, an increase overall of 2.2, including the adult ed, I can live with that.
Appreciate that comment.
Anyone else?
Thank you, councilor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James.
All right, so for item number four, we'll go through each of those council orders, open public hearing for comment, and then seek action from the council. So we'll begin with council order number 061519, an order approving state-local EPS funding allocation for public education of kindergarten to grade 12 for Ellsworth schools for FY 2016. Public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak to, to this item? Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Council action.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of council order 061519 is presented.
Second. Move and second it? Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Next item is council order 061520, an order approving non-state-funded school construction debt service for Ellsworth schools for FY 2016. Public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on this particular item? Seeing none, hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Council?
Mr. Chairman, move approval of council order 061520.
Second.
Move and second it? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is council order 061521, an order raising and appropriating additional local funds for Ellsworth schools for FY 2016. Public hearing is open. Anyone wish to speak to this particular item? Public hearing is closed. Council, your action.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of council order 061521.
Second.
Move and second it? Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Next item is council order 061522, an order approving total school operating budget for Ellsworth schools for FY 2016. Public hearing is open. Anyone wish to speak on this item, 061522? Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of council order 061522 is presented.
Second.
Thank you.
Move and second it? Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Bledsoe.
One of the things I meant to mention, I just wanted to thank the politicians in Augusta for their budget cuts and unfunded mandates and making it so damn difficult for us to come up with a budget for Ellsworth and other communities. That's all.
Thank you.
I second that motion.
Here. Comments are all taken. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Next item is council order number 061523, an order appropriating and raising funds for adult education for FY 2016 as required by the main revised statutes, Title 28, MRSA, subsection 8603A1. Public hearing is open. Anyone wish to speak on this item regarding adult education? Public hearing is closed. Council?
Mr. Chairman, move council order- Mr. Chairman, move council order 061524 as presented.
We're on 23.
24, 23.
Second.
I was just so excited.
Moving seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous.
Need one of these, it'll keep her in touch a little bit better.
What is that? That computer?
Council order, next item, council order 061524, an order to raise local funds for food service in the Ellsworth Public Schools for FY2016. Public hearing is open. Anyone wish to speak to this? And public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to handle 061524 again.
Okay.
Move to approve as presented.
Second. Moving seconded. Any discussion?
Just one thing.
Council?
This is a lot like a solid waste program where there's tax dollars going into a user-based economy, and we've heard from Superintendent Higgins that they're working on ways to reduce that number as we go forward, and I'd encourage him to keep going, because we shouldn't be subsidizing to this level in the food service. But I know you're on it, but I just had to say that.
Thank you, councilor. Councilor.
Thank you for your comments, and we are and we will.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Next item is council order number 061525, order to authorize expenditure of grants and other receipts for school department programs. Public hearing now open. Any comments or questions, concerns? Seeing none? Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of council order 061525.
Second. Moving seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Next item, council order number 061526, an order approving reduction in local tax assessments in the event of an increase in state funding for public schools for FY2016. And this is the very item that Superintendent Higgins referred to in his presentation. Public hearing is open. Anyone care to comment on this? Seeing no one? Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve council order 061526 as presented.
Second. With your second, Councilor Blatchett, do you want to send any message to the legislature as well, on this one?
Verbal?
Visual. Cameras on, visual.
Any further discussion?
It's Mr. LaPage's job.
All in favor? That is unanimous. I thank you, council. Superintendent Higgins.
Members of the council, Mr. City Manager, I'd like to express our, on behalf of the school department and the school board, appreciation for your continued support of education in Ellsworth, and we do appreciate the action you've taken this morning. We'd also like to remind all of our voters that the referendum is on July 7th, and I believe the polls are open from 8 to 8.
Correct.
So, we encourage people to get out and exercise their civic responsibility.
And absentee ballots will be available today.
Absentee ballots available today. Thank you again to you and your staff for this presentation. Appreciate it. Item number five, public hearing in action, the adoption of a continuing resolution to fund the city's various departments and accounts in an amount sufficient to finance necessary expenses till a final budget resolve is in force. What we have here is a situation where it's really impossible to close the budget until we know if and what the revenue sharing numbers are going to be, and state aid education has been finally settled, so we know out of this new state buying a budget what to anticipate there. So, we're still obviously being held up by that, and the idea here is to adopt a continuing resolution to fund the various departments and the accounts of the city in an amount which we will specify is not to exceed $2 million, and for the month of July. And if, in the unlikely situation, we hope, that the final budget is not resolved, then we would have to come back and repeat this process. This is according to a city charter, and it is, we also have a legal opinion from the city attorney, that we certainly can hold a public hearing on the adoption of a continuing resolution to fund the city's various departments and accounts in an amount sufficient to finance necessary expenses until a final budget resolve is enforced. And so, we're completely within our charter, and that is section 6H, I believe, under budget resolve, which says, and I quote, "In the event the council fails to adopt the budget by the beginning date of the fiscal year, the council may make appropriations by a continuing resolution to the various departments and accounts in the amount sufficient to finance the necessary expenses until the budget resolve is enforced." So, that's what we have before us. I will open the public hearing for public comment. Anyone wish to comment on council's impending action to adopt a continuing resolution? Public hearing is closed. Council, your action.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the interim city manager to approve the adoption of a continuing resolution to fund the various departments and accounts of the city of Ellsworth in an amount not to exceed $2 million for the month of July 2015, in order to finance necessary city water and wastewater department expenses until a final budget resolve is adopted. In the event a final budget resolve is not adopted by the end of July 2015, this process shall be repeated.
Second. Moving second. Any discussion on this item? Councilor Fortier.
Just for public consumption, we had a discussion early in finance, and it's my understanding that the finance director is going to make sure that we keep the budget freeze on, nonessential purchases will not be allowed, capital projects like, unfortunately, ordering a new plow truck, now we're going to be delayed another month, can't order the police cruisers, stuff like that, is just, as I said, for public consumption, that we're not just going out, starting to spend it.
Right.
Just to keep essential services going.
Finance director concurs there?
Okay. And if I remember right, Mr. Chairman, the school education piece of it, they're allowed to operate under the last budget that the city council has approved, so.
Correct.
And I would suggest that Superintendent Higgins knows not to go out and start spending too.
Right.
And that we don't need the new plow truck early on in the late fall.
Yeah. If I might add, to everyone's hopes, we have a budget by next Tuesday, and this is a one-month occurrence, but should this go on, then we'd be coming back to the council to renew this for the following month, but hopefully that isn't going to happen. If I could expand on what Councilor Fortier brought up, and I think the public needs to know this, that the school department budget does not need to be part of the continuing resolution.
Correct.
The school budget presented to the voters, even though it was rejected, according to statute 28, MRSA, section 2307 and 1487, it is automatically considered the budget for the operational expenses for the ensuing year until a final budget is approved, just so everybody's on the same page there, and the citizens of Ellsworth understand that too, and the voters will understand that, so. We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion or questions? I'll put the question. All in favor? That is unanimous. Move on to item six. This is one of the items that's been added, which is council order number 061527, request to the deputy treasurer tax collector to accept payments on tax-acquired timeshare units per year attached spreadsheet, and authorize city manager to release said properties through municipal claim deeds.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Tupper.
So, I have sold two timeshare units since the last meeting, and the reason I requested to come to the special meeting to accept the payment is because one of these units is actually coming up quickly, so I'm hoping that we can just expedite the process for them so that they can hopefully use it this year. So, I'm just asking to accept the payment and have the city manager sign off.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Moving second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
That's unanimous, and hopefully they'll be able to use it. Next item is item 6A, another added item, and that is regarding the tax anticipation borrowing authority, and defer to the finance director.
So, a few weeks ago, at the June regular council meeting, the council authorized the borrowing of $3.5 million for a tax anticipation note. The bond council was drawing up the paperwork and realized that due to this past year, when we've done the refinancing of the USCAA loans, that we would have gone over our small issuer bank-qualified borrowing amount of $10 million. The IRS stipulates how much a municipality can borrow on a tax-exempt basis. Therefore, it reduced that amount to $2,150,000. He's drawn up the paperwork, and it's all been signed, and it ended up at TD Bank, which was the low bidder at .7%. They stated that they wanted to do it as a lump sum, and if they were going to do it on an as-needed basis of the entire $3.5 million, that it was going to increase the interest rate to .80%. And if we didn't accept that, they were going to pull their bid. So, we've looked at, and this just happened yesterday, that's why it's before you, I thank you for putting this on the agenda. We've looked at the next low bidder, which was Bangor Savings Bank. They came in at .72%. We are in contact with them to make sure that they'll be able to make this move forward really quickly, and if they will honor that .72%. I don't have a definite answer. I've already talked with bond council this morning, and we're just waiting to hear from the bank to see if they can go ahead and do that. So, we don't have a definite bank that we can award it to at this time, but this council order would authorize me to award it, and then immediately refer back to the council to let them know, and for the appropriate paperwork. They'd be able to turn this around in order for us to have the cash by next Thursday. We'd be signing the paperwork on Monday, if at all possible, and we would be able to turn it around that quickly. So, this would just, this would do the authorization.
You are the clerk. Could you tell me, do we need a public hearing?
Hopefully not, because we haven't been able to give them the 14-day notice.
No notice, yeah.
Right, it's more of an amendment to the original.
To the original.
We still need to borrow a $3.5 million through the year. It's just going to be split now. It's going to be the 2.15 now, and then in January, because when you borrow money, the IRS looks at it on it as a calendar basis, whereas on fiscal year.
So, we have approved it already.
Correct.
Right. Just clarifying, for the record.
Mr. Chairman, be it hereby ordered and resolved by the city council as followed, that the city finance director being is authorized to award up to $2,150,000 of the authorized tan amount to the bank with the lowest interest rate pricing at that amount, as she will, as she shall determine in her discretion, and that she shall thereafter report said award to the city council.
Second. Moving seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's unanimous, and thank you for keeping us updated. And number seven.
Move adjournment.
Second. Moving seconded, all in favor? We're adjourned.